Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 City Council Meeting of February 3, 2021. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
Councilmember Parlier.
Here.
Thank you. On March 4, Governor Newsom declared a state of emergency in California due to the threat of COVID-19. The governor also passed several executive orders, including the suspension of some components of the Brown Act related to public meetings like this one. Therefore, seating in the council chamber is limited. At this time, I'm going to ask for all of us to stand, and Councilmember Parlier will offer the invocation. Following the invocation, Councilmember Freeman will lead us in the pledge.
Please bow your heads. In God with justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service and remind us that we are the stewards of your authority. Guide us to be leaders of your people need. Help us to see the humanity and dignity in those who disagree with us, and to treat all persons with reverence for your creation that it deserves. Lord, renew us with the strength of your presence and joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. In Jesus' name, amen.
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. Here are a few details to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos. And for safety reasons, and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chamber or lobby. Applause is allowed only during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not at other portions. And please avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting. Madam Clerk, please read the first item.
Public Statements. Mayor, before we begin with the public statements, I would like to announce that we have received a staff memorandum regarding public hearing item 10A. We will conduct the public hearing to receive public comment, but no action will be taken tonight.
Thank you. This meeting has limited public access, therefore, public comments were encouraged to be made to the city clerk through email or by phone call. If you're here to make a public statement, please give a speaker card, fill it out, and give it to the city clerk. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give those to the clerk. She'll give copies to the council. And as the city clerk mentioned, hearing item 10A will be re-noticed at a future date. If you're here to speak on that item and still want to speak, you'll have an opportunity when that item is called. We're very interested and concerned with your issues. However, due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, the council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Please avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting, such as repetitive statements or going over the three-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers tonight?
Mayor Go, we've received 16 public speaker cards this evening, 14 regarding the rescission of the backyard hen ordinances, and two regarding general public comments. We've also provided two staff memorandums transmitting correspondence. Four general public comments were received regarding items not on tonight's agenda. Additionally, comments were received in favor and against the rescission of the backyard hen ordinances.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And as a reminder, all statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. Thank you to all of you who have provided input. I know many of you have provided, as the clerk said, written comments and also by phone. So, Madam Clerk, would you please call the first public speaker? And I need the cards, please.
Mayor Go, the first public speaker tonight, Michael Turnipseed. Following Michael Turnipseed, James Osborne.
Thank you. Please introduce yourself.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm Michael Turnipseed. I represent the Kern County Taxpayers Association. We're getting into season, budget's around the corner, so there's some things that I would like to start a discussion on so they maybe can be included in the budget or measure in spending. First and foremost is our police staffing problem. I received a report, the numbers I got from the city manager, and actually, on Election Day 2018, we had 397 sworn officers. Today, we have 392 sworn officers, with 49 in the academy, but based on past experience, all 49 aren't going to be counted on. It could be half of that, so we have to be concerned about that, what will actually be. But I know they use the term "compliments," so I assume in your budgeting, compliment means budgeted positions? Is that a question I didn't really understand, ever seen that before? But if you remember last spring, Kern Act proposed that the city take $10 million of measure-in money and hire 40 laterals. And I'm going to get to why this is so important. But the chief said at the time, publicly at a meeting, we couldn't handle 40 laterals at the time. So the second handout I gave you was the crime report. In 2019, there were 294 reported shootings in the city of Bakersfield. In 2020, that number jumped to 472. That's a 60% increase. Obviously, the rollout of measure-in, the public safety initiative, is not working to this point. Third thing I'd like to bring up is the idea of customer safety. I get emails from time to time from citizens who send to staff about their fix-it tickets, and I've asked, does the city have a log of these fix-it tickets? So we can actually see, people say, I submitted tickets for four years and they never get fixed, my street light never gets fixed. Well, I'd like to see those, and I'm sure most of the public would like to see a report of how long it takes to react to when a citizen puts in a request to fix a light or something happening. And I think, and the fact that they don't get a return email telling them on the status of their update. You've heard a lot with measure-in talking about customer service and when people come to town to take their money. Well, these are people who already live here and are paying the taxes. And streetlights are important, and we have a lot of streetlights in town that aren't being repaired and haven't been repaired. And we supposedly have a study about the need of more streetlights. So I hope we can talk about that and move some of these issues forward over the next few months. Two seconds left.
Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed. Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to refer all three of those items to Safe Neighborhoods so we can have an in-depth talk on each. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Turnipseed, thank you for coming. I think one of the issues you're referring to is on S Street. Per the email for it I received from you, from a Mr. Andrew May, he's requesting, or he was complaining about a streetlight that hasn't been out, has been out for four years, and he's submitted a dozen tickets. But it's my understanding that this portion of the city is actually privately maintained through an HOA. Mr. Clegg, do you have any more information on this particular request? I know you received it on this email.
Yes, thank you, councilmember, and through the chair. This location on S Street, these are decorative lights that were upscaled in the development process and are the responsibility of the HOA, and we've communicated that with residents and tried to help connect them to the HOA to make that request.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Freeman. Oh, sorry, Councilmember Smith is next.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to follow up quickly on a couple of those things, you mentioned lateral transfers, and I thought I'd seen something recently where we were working on that or being successful with that.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Smith, through the chair. The city staff has been fairly proactive in reaching out to other entities that we know are experiencing reductions in their staffing. And of course, you have to be conscientious in hiring individuals that may have been laid off, but often, it's a question of seniority that just, those that have been on the force the shortest time are often laid off first, and that doesn't mean they're not a good employee. And so our Human Resources Director has reached out to several agencies to invite them to let their individuals that are being laid off know that the City of Bakersfield is hiring. And we received 32 lateral applicants in recent months. Of course, it's like other, where for our academies, we typically receive 1,000 applicants, and it narrows down to about that, you know, 30 or 40 that end up being in the academy. But we have looked at these 32 applicants. We actually are taking to the Police Civil Service Board next week, a list certifying nine individuals from those initial 32 that have been screened through some of our processes. There do remain some of the ultimate background checks and psychological evaluations typical of law enforcement, but we do have several individuals that we've been pursuing as laterals, and that would be a great addition to the force.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith, now Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. Following up on that same topic, Mr. Clegg, after the issue goes to the Safe Neighborhoods Committee, is that the name of it? It would, I'd like to report back to the council on, first, number one, you know, the challenges in hiring new officers and keeping, someday adding 100 to what was about 400 before. Just what are all the challenges we're facing? What are we doing? Obviously, we're having challenges if we're sort of flat, as Mr. Turnipseed said, on sworn officers, because of retirements. And also, could you address, because it always comes up, sort of the accounting, you know, when someone is replaced, do we count as a general fund or measure-in? And I know we basically kind of make a best efforts to use measure-in for net new people, but if we're not really getting net new people, we're having to fill existing positions, whether they come from the academy or Fresno, it gets to be kind of a complicated accounting game. So we need some way to clarify and understand that, that's simple, and you may have to put some thought into that. And then finally, I would really like to know, what are the causes of crime going up? And I don't think it's necessarily because we had 400 officers, we still have 400 officers, with a number of things that have taken place in our state, with releasing tens of thousands of prisoners, COVID hitting. I'd just like to know what law enforcement says about, you know, because we would like to know what's causing the obvious increase in crime. By the way, I noticing in a lot of other cities, and I visit, I guess you could call it vandalism, you know, stealing something, breaking into cars, busting windows, breaking into homes, less than 1,000 bucks, you know, no penalty. They're experiencing, I think, and it'd be nice to know, survey some other cities, is this, are we worse than the other cities? Are we about on par with the others? You know, what are the key factors for success? What's really going on? I'd like to report back so the whole council can understand.
If I may, Councilmember Freeman, and through the chair, just a few initial thoughts, because I think these are all worthwhile topics, and I think good things to discuss at Safe Neighborhoods to provide these updates, but some initial responses. First, just one note of clarification on the numbers. We actually have 402 sworn officers that are on the streets today, because there are 441 sworn officers. 39 of those are in academy, and so there are 402 that are regular sworn officers. And to the question of accounting, yes, we haven't faced this challenge quite yet until recently, because we had a number of separations through the fall. Typically, those retirements happen towards the end of each calendar year, and so we've had a number of separations and hired new officers into our academy through the summer academy, and then these 39 individuals through our winter academy. And so there's been, sort of, we haven't experienced having all of our PSVS positions filled and having some of those general fund positions retire out until sort of this, you know, 18-month mark into this process. And we do need to take a look at how we're accounting for those positions where they're assigned. Typically, the cycles of hiring is that, you know, we're hiring the new folks under PSVS, and then we've had some folks, you know, leave out through those separations. And so there are opportunities for us to make some of those adjustments, and I think that that does make sense. And so we'll prepare an approach to do that. As I've mentioned previously, in the city of Stockton, we hired 120 officers over a four-year period, and had to come up with a way to demonstrate which funding source each officer was going to, based on which positions are open at which moment in time, and we can do that here as well. As to crime, the issue of violent crime is of particular concern to Chief Terry and I. We've been talking about it for several months and looking at our CALVIP implementation for a gun violence intervention program. And because of the pandemic and so many things going on, I think in some ways, it hasn't raised up to the public dialogue that it might in a typical year, but Chief and I have been talking about it because we're very concerned about it. And violent crime throughout the nation and throughout the state is up. Every city, including those that have particular gun violence intervention programs, and I'm very familiar with those as partners that worked in that with us from my experiences in Stockton, everyone is experiencing these types of increases, and it's concerning. And we absolutely need to get in front of it, but it's been tough all around in lots of places over this past year. And good topics, again, as I mentioned, to discuss through the Safe Neighborhoods Committee and then bring back to the council some information on all of those.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. So on my referrals, you can strike the one on the streetlights. I think Andre sufficiently handled that. I still want to keep the crime analysis and the staffing levels in safe neighborhoods, but Ward 7 has experienced a large uptick in homicides since the beginning of the year, and I think there's interest across the board on the council to hear what the chief has to say on crime statistics and what's happening in our city for crime. So can we have a workshop, maybe, you know, as soon as possible, just to have a discussion of, you know, kind of what's going on?
Yes, councilmember, we can schedule a workshop. I think we've got some pretty big items at our next meeting with the mid-year budget, but we'd look, could look to do that in our March workshops.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Parlier. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
James Osborne.
Please introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is James Osborne. I am the vice president of a nonprofit called Villagers, Inc., and I'll keep this very brief. I'm just here tonight to bring an awareness of what we're trying to accomplish in our city. We are one of, if not the only, nonprofit that is offering distance learning services to the families here in Bakersfield for free. And we have held off on coming to the city for help until now, and that is because we are receiving a vast overwhelming amount of a need of support from districts like the BCSD School District and the Kern High School District, and we are in need of resources to help us deal with the amount of need that is arising to the distance learning issues going on in our families. We want to thank Councilman Andre Gonzalez for sharing his desires to support what we're doing. I've sent out a couple of emails to the mayor's office and haven't gotten any words back, and so we're just really wanting to express our need for help from the city. We have about 12 students in our program right now, and based on the phone calls that we get on a daily basis, we are looking to double, if not triple, those numbers within the next month. And we are in desperate need of help with resources and funding. We received the Kern Recovers Grant last year. We were one of the first companies to receive that, and that money is almost depleted. With the pandemic and COVID-19, we are down to about 3% of the donors that we usually have on an annual basis. And so now we feel like it's a need and a necessary step to come to the council and to the city to ask for your support. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Osborne. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Osborne, thank you so much for coming today, and thank you for the work that you're doing. I was really impressed, colleagues, to visit what they're doing at their facility right on Baker Street. Mr. Osborne and his wife are making things happen out of their own pockets and certainly doing a great deed for our community and serving our families in need. Councilmember Arias, you'd be happy to hear that they, in fact, serve many children from Ward 1 as well, in addition to Ward 2. Mr. Clegg, if you can ask a staff member to reach out to Mr. Osborne and see if there might be opportunities with the new CDBG allocations or other pots as it relates to the CARES Act funding, or some of our recent allocations that we've made for certain programs to help small nonprofits and businesses. I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Mr. Osborne, you're on my list to follow up, and I will do that. Madam Clerk, next speakers, and this is where we have a block of the same topic.
Correct, Mayor. The next speakers are all speaking on the topic of the backyard hen ordinance rescission.
Okay. And in keeping with our practice, we'll have 15 minutes here, so Madam Clerk, please call the first speaker.
Gary Simmons.
Mr. Simmons.
Just wanted to take a brief moment and just thank Mr. Gary Simmons. He has offered to donate to our nonprofit $10,000.
Thank you. Mr. Simmons.
It's a little expensive to come here. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, for bringing that to our attention. Here we are. We've got some conversation to have regarding thanking you, the city council, including the new members, for your vote to rescind the chicken issue. It's a real tough, tough thing for everybody. We're in the middle of a pandemic. It's getting worse and worse and worse as each day goes. It was the worst possible time to try to do something of this nature for the community. I commend you, commend you for your decision. It doesn't mean that this won't roll back someday, but it gives everybody the opportunity to do more due diligence, more homework, read all the data that's available, because the opponents of this situation have provided a tremendous amount of data from Disease Control, from the State of California Veterinarian, from hospital owners, from physicians, from first responders. The number-one person at risk in our society for chicken epidemic and chicken issues and chicken problems and to transmit it are elementary school children. And you can read that in the CDC. One report says 10 years old, and the other report says 6 years old. We can't let that happen with what's happening with, to return to school now. We cannot compromise children's behavior in classrooms. And anybody that's in a position to control that should know better and should not be ignorant about that. It's a high responsibility. The pandemic changes the rules for everything, including who can be here tonight. Two of our speakers who are going to be here have COVID. They found that out. Terrible. So here we are. We're in a city with 85,300 and something R1 homeowner investments. That comes out to $290, excuse me, I wish, $290,000 median home price comes out to $23 billion of R1 property investment in our community. We cannot sacrifice the rights of these people. I could go on and on, because it has gone on and on now for months and months and months. Our community only found out about this in July, when we had a meeting with Mr. Gonzalez in a neighborhood park. And there was attorneys there, there were physicians there, there were CEOs there, there were presidents of corporations there, and he informed us about what was on the agenda. So what we want to do is say thank you. It was a long time coming. Let's sit back, let's do our due diligence. I'm listening to the crime situation. I'm listening to what this city council has to deal with, and measure-in money is not an answer to everything, because we're running out. We've got a budget problem coming at us. So thank you very much, and I commend you for the decision.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Pardon me?
Thank you, and next speaker. Yes, thank you.
Carl Bryan.
Please introduce yourself.
Good evening. Madam Mayor, city council members, my name is Carl Bryan. I was born in Bakersfield at Mercy Hospital in 1945. Bakersfield has been my place of residence my entire life, except for my college years at Carnegie Mellon University in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, and three years with the U.S. Army Signal Corps, including 19 months in Vietnam. The years since I began working with my father in the insurance business in 1972, and then as a mathematics instructor and substitute teacher, have been filled with my desire to be an active citizen, and I have done so in many ways. 50 years of membership in Kiwanis, one year on the Kern County Grand Jury, twice a member of the Electoral College of California, and an eight-gallon donor at Houchen Blood Bank. My primary life outside of employment has been serving as a sports public address announcer for Bakersfield College Football for 34 seasons, and track and field at youth, high school, college, state, national, and world track and field championships for 45 years. I'm a bit uncomfortable asking for your help, but I appreciate being included in the public statements regarding the hen ordinance. The safe and healthy keeping of household hens according to reasonable restrictions have many benefits, including fresh eggs, and for my family especially, a healthy learning experience for school-aged children and younger, including my grandchildren. My frequent conversations with hen owners are a good learning experience for me. One summer working at the Jamarra Grape Packing Warehouse is my only personal connection with agriculture, other than gardening. Bakersfield has always been a city that depends on agriculture and farming for its prominent place been a city that depends on agriculture and farming for its prominent place in the country. The keeping and caring of pets and other animals is an experience that no one should miss. Thank you for the chance to be heard. The lack of sporting events to announce recently has kept me uncomfortable. Ken, good to see you. Guess what? I just moved. You're my councilman. All right. Expect to hear from me often. We started tonight. Really good to see you. We had business dealings back when I was doing pension plan administration, and his clients, some of his clients needed service, and Karen, again, the job that John Hefner's memorial service, what an experience. She gave the ending, the benediction at the end. And if anybody didn't know John Hefner, an amazing man. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak to all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Bryan. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Anna Albiar.
Good evening, Mayor Go, and members of the council. My name is Anna Albiar, president-elect of the Bakersfield Association of Realtors, the county's largest trade association representing over 2,300 members in Bakersfield. I am here today to urge you to accept staff's recommendation and rescind the ordinances related to backyard hens hereby referred to as the ordinance. First, I want to say we are not against owning chickens. Our issue is with the process and believe this should have gone through the zoning process. The Realtors are ardent advocates for private property rights. However, we also support good public policy that builds and maintains healthy and vibrant communities. We believe that the ordinance passed by the City Council in the fall of 2020 had many flaws resulting in unintended consequences. We recommend staff and council for bringing, we commend staff and council for bringing the item back for reconsideration. As you know, we submitted a substantial, detailed, and thorough analysis in addition to several recommendations and arguments. One example is that the ordinance has a very broad scope as it applies to lot sizes of 6,000 square feet and larger, which essentially, which is essentially most of all R1 zoned homes in Bakersfield or over 85,000 homes. Since this scope is so large and the impact is so significant, we believe that this should have gone through the appropriate zoning evaluations. The ordinance needs clearer lot size restrictions, setbacks, and limitations to protect the integrity and safety of the residential neighborhoods throughout our city. Therefore, a full environmental impact review should be required at the minimum. We highly recommend that you rescind the ordinance tonight and direct staff to review our analysis to amend any future ordinances that will be brought before your board for future consideration. On behalf of our association's leadership and members, we thank you for the opportunity to provide input for your leadership on this matter.
Thank you, Ms. Albiar. Madam Clerk, how much time do we have left on this topic from our 15 minutes?
Six minutes and eight seconds.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the next speaker?
Janet Rossi.
Welcome. Please lower the mic so that we can hear you. Thank you.
Okay. Hello. My name is Janet Rossi. I'm here before you today on behalf of Philip Rudnick. He wanted to be here to present to you today, but because of COVID instructions, he could not be here, and has asked me to introduce to you Phoenix Farms, spelled P-H-A-R-M-S. He does oppose an outright rescission of allowing the backyard chickens with proper guidelines. Philip reached out to me because he had supported and bought eggs for my grandson, Phoenix Agalos. He met Phoenix when he was seven. They struck up a great friendship. It was always a good day for Phoenix when he got to collect and deliver his eggs to Philip. Phoenix was nine and had operated his little small egg farm while fighting brain cancer, and he lost his battle in May of 2019. It was always good for his spirit and sense of responsibility and his happiness. With with Phoenix, Phil wants to help carry on Phoenix's egg farm dream in Phoenix's memory. With his help, Philip Rudnick and the parents Mario and Wendy Mendoza, and the encouragement from my son Peter Agalos, father of Phoenix, and myself, his grandmother, and the boys, they also want to carry on an egg business and do it in the memory of Phoenix that who they'd never met. They have been learning the egg business while working with their parents at their five-acre residence in the Edison area. A portion of the sale of every dozen eggs will be donated to a local charity, with the remainder profits going to fund their educations. Philip has me here in support of the Bakersfield Backyard Chicken Ordinance. We hope that people can keep their backyard chickens within guidelines, but if the ordinance cannot prevail, Phil and the Mendoza boys want Bakersfield residents to know that Phoenix Farms can provide a new home for chickens that are unable to stay in backyards of Bakersfield residents. The boys are expanding their free-range chicken facilities to accommodate hens that may be placed in their care. The plan is to grow, accommodate, and further develop a tiny farm that parents and children can visit, participate in caring for the free-range hens, purchase eggs, enjoy, and care for animals in a petting zoo in proper environment, and participate in growing and picking vegetables in the community garden. A website is under construction, phoenixfarms.com is under construction. And in the meantime, if anyone's interested or needs help with their chickens, they can call Philip at 661-832-2500, or email him at phil@upstartvillage.com. He is always with community in mind. This message is from Phil, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Rossi, and we're sorry for the loss of Phoenix. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Jo Newton.
Welcome, Mr. Newton.
Thank you very much, and good evening to each of you, Mayor. My presence tonight is very quick to make mention of one side effect or unintended consequence, and a part of our membership of the Board of Realtors addresses unintended consequences. I was an instructor of real estate B.C. for about 40 years. I'm serving now as the ombudsman for the Association of Realtors, so I'm kind of the complete department, also known as complete department. The unintended consequence, and I think this is attributable to many of the people who have known me through the classroom, and they do ask me this, should this ordinance prevail where chickens are allowed, what would we need to do to place deed restrictions in our property to prohibit the restrictions that would run with the land, obviously? As you know, many HOAs, including what I'm a part of, for 60 years has had prohibitions of ducks and geese and turkeys and all the rest. And that family of homes, about 1,100 in southwest Bakersfield, has upheld that C C N R, because it's more restrictive than anything else. Anyway, the unintended consequence is that many calls that I have received, informal, of course, what can we do to put deed restrictions in our property that would prohibit any of what we're talking about this evening? And of course, I want to address that on a legal issue, but you can see that normally, private property owners want to maintain their values, and they often do it by deed restrictions, and each of us know how those work out in our own personal property that we live in. I mentioned that to you just as a homeowners are going to do what they need to do, permissive, under the law, of course, in order to protect the values of their private property. So I leave that with you as one other consideration in ordinances that are passed that interfere with the private ownership and maybe the rights or or not of how you use your land. So with that, I bid you farewell, and thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. And would you just restate your name for the record?
I'm sorry. Jo Newton.
Thank you, Mr. Newton.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, how much time do we have left of the 15 minutes on this topic?
We have one minute remaining.
Thank you. And so we have one minute for the next speaker. Would you please call that person?
Wendy Mendoza.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself and go ahead.
Hi, my name is Wendy Mendoza, and I'm in favor of the chicken within guidelines, and here to support the Phoenix tiny farm. And I'm also the parent of the two kids that that are going to be supporting that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mendoza. And we still have a little bit of time left. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Forty seconds remaining for Brian Taylor.
Mr. Taylor. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Brian Taylor. Don't think I'll get through all of this in 40 seconds, but I feel like what hasn't been addressed tonight is the whole issue of why we're here, which is the lawsuit that's pending right now. It's what brought us back here. And so I've done a little looking into SEQA, and while I'm not a an expert by any stretch, I have been a paralegal, so I kind of understand how things are written. And I'd like to read something out of SEQA if I could, and I'll make it quick. In the guidelines of implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act, it plainly states with zero ambiguity that SEQA applies to government actions that involve projects directly undertaken by a governmental agency, projects financed in whole or in part by a governmental agency, or private projects which require approval from a governmental agency. So I'm trying to figure out why private projects of building coops and having chickens is governed by SEQA, because it doesn't seem to make any sense to me, and that seems to be the major issue with the.
Mr. Taylor, your time is up. Thank you. If you want to go ahead and address that question, you can submit it in writing, and we'll take it up with the council.
Should I submit this whole thing?
Sure, go ahead and just give it to our city clerk here. And so we have come to the end of that. Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers on any other topics?
We have no other speakers, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item, please.
Consent calendar items 8A through 8X for approval. We received a staff memorandum regarding item 8W, transmitting additional reports.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I have only received one item to be pulled for separate consideration. That is item 8F. Any other council members have anything? Seeing none, I move approval of item 8A through 8X, except for 8F.
You have a motion? Please cash your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And now, item 8F, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been around eight years now, and this subject has been discussed for all of those eight years. In 2012, when I first got on the council, it came before the council then, and it was decided to postpone it. Cities such as Sacramento and San Diego at that time had just passed the ordinance to allow urban hens in R1 neighborhoods. And the idea was, well, let's wait and see how it works out. So we waited eight years, and we called those cities and other cities after the eight years, and they said, well, not really any problems. So the sky did not fall with the passing of it. And I believe we're not here, as the last gentleman stated, to discuss the pros and cons of hens. We did that thoroughly. We had a workshop. We had public pro and con discussion, much of it. It was sent to committee. It came back. It went to first reading, and it went to second reading, and it was approved by this council. And then we were sued by a Beverly Hills firm that specializes in SEQA lawsuits. That firm had also sued us multiple times during our freeway projects, and we fought every one of those. And in the end, we built our freeways. Yes, it does cost money to fight Beverly Hills attorneys on SEQA lawsuits, but we were able to do what we told the community we were going to do. So that's really where I land on this, is it's about fulfilling what a majority of the council voted for, and that was to enact an urban hen ordinance. We have not in the past rolled over to lawsuits. We don't even know if the judge would have said, yeah, your exemption's fine. That's what most other cities do for urban hen ordinances. We don't know if maybe he would have required a negative declaration. We certainly, I certainly don't believe that an environmental impact report would be required. I don't know of any other cities that have passed urban hen ordinances and required environmental impact reports. So with that, I'm not sure where the rest of my colleagues stand, but I am going to make a motion to stand firm on the existing ordinance. And I guess that would be, you might have to help me with the wording, city attorney, because the the item states rescission of the following ordinances. So I would move to hold the ordinances as they were passed by previous council, and continue to fight the lawsuit, and support the council as we do other times when the freeway projects went through many councils and many lawsuits, and we continued the direction that the city had. And I just don't understand rolling over at the threat from the Beverly Hills attorney immediately. So my move is to uphold the existing ordinances and to continue to support them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Jenny, since everybody seems to want to ignore the lawsuit that we were served with, maybe you could give us in public a risks, the cost, and the chances of us winning this lawsuit, in your opinion?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We're council members. Well, first, in order to address the last speaker, I think it's important to know that the project we're talking about isn't the construction of the coops, but it's the ordinance itself. And the city of Bakersfield has been sued before on ordinances. You may remember our hillside ordinance. So it's the ordinance that's the project, and it's the project that requires the SEQA analysis. As most of this council knows, it is extremely expensive to defend SEQA lawsuits, and I would tell you really that the deck is somewhat stacked against public entities, and I'll explain why. If we were to defend this lawsuit, we would need to go to outside counsel to help defend this lawsuit. The rates in 2019 from the last SEQA law, the last SEQA attorney that we used is $325 an hour. That's a 2019 rate. The petitioner's rate right now is calculated. The petitioner's rate right now is calculated at $400 an hour. That is directly from Mr. Hall, and he has invested right now 22 hours in this case. In my experience with the city, I've had over 30 CEQA cases. I can safely tell you that it would take a minimum of 500 hours for this case to go from start through a trial with the CEQA judge here in super court. If you take 500 hours and you multiply that at $325, you're going to come out to a little over $162,000. If you multiply 500 times $400 an hour, which is the petitioner's hourly rate, you're going to come up with $200,000 an hour. Then, we need to tack on to that the administrative record costs, and that is basically going back to 2012, as Councilmember Smith said, and gathering all of the documents on this topic, which will utilize the city clerk, planning staff, et cetera. They have to be collected. They have to be copied, and they have to be put in the order that the California law requires that they be put in. My experience, again, that's going to cost a minimum of about $25,000. Why is the deck stacked against us? If we go to court and we win at a minimum under 500 hours, that's going to cost the city $200,000, the 162 plus the cost of the administrative record. The law does not allow us to collect our attorney's fees from the losing party, from the petitioner. The law does allow in CEQA for the prevailing party, in this case, the petitioner, to win. So, it doesn't allow the public entity to collect the fees, but it allows the public entity to pay the other side if they lose. So, if we lose, not only are we out our $200,000, but we are going to be out the other side's fee, which is also $200,000. So, you're looking at $400,000 minimum if we lose this case, and that's assuming no appeal, and that's assuming 500 hours. If it's more than 500 hours, obviously, just prorate the fees. Now, getting to your question of whether or not we would win and what that involves. I mean, obviously, I don't have a crystal ball. But what I can very candidly tell the council is, again, in my career, I've handled upwards of 30 CEQA cases. And again, Councilmember Smith is correct, we have not rolled over. But the record will still reflect that we have lost all of them, with the exception of two on the first go-around. So, it depends on how one defines a win. If you define a win as having a project eventually built, as having a freeway built, or having the Walmart store built, then yes, we've won at a tremendous cost. And most of those costs were not paid for by the city. They were paid for by the developer or the applicant, because the developer or the applicant agreed to indemnify the city. In this case, there is no developer or applicant. So, if we lose that first round, or even the second round, we pay not only our costs and fees, but we pay for the other side's attorney's fees. And again, on all of those cases in which we have lost, my recollection is they were all done with an EIR, a full EIR. And while I would hope that we do not need a full EIR should this council decide to go further with the hen issue, we have to recognize that staff took the least restrictive environmental document. We took an exemption. And while there may be other cities that have utilized the exemption, you cannot point me to a city that has the exact same ordinance that we do. So, I would tell you that I am, I would think that our risk, that we are very vulnerable on an NOE, on an exemption, if we proceed forward with this lawsuit. And you will need to recognize that if we lose on that first round, that we will have to pay our fees plus the petitioner's fees at $400 an hour.
Okay. Thank you. Hearing that, I appreciate everybody that's come out and has addressed this issue. But I have my own motion. And I move approval of item 8F, and that the subject, the backyard hens, shall not appear before the council in the future for any reason unless at least four council members vote to hear the matter again.
Okay. Thank you. And so, we have, we take the second motion first, per our rules. You have a motion, which would be Councilmember Weir's motion. And now, would you please cast your votes? Sorry. Councilmember Arias, would you like to... Yes. So, Councilmember Arias, I saw that you just buzzed in.
I did. Do we have a moment to go back?
To, yes.
To just speak about the issue?
Yes. Uh-huh.
Jenny, I just want to thank you for providing some clarification on what some of the costs and what the timeline would look like if we were to pursue something like that. One of the things that I've heard from constituents throughout the city of Bakersfield is that after the, and of course, this comes before my time, so I appreciate any sort of enlightening you can do on that front. But after the council approved the ordinance, many in our community invested in these chicken coops and creating these structures in their yards. And that puts them in an interesting limbo. And so, I'm curious, I'm not a lawyer. Does that create any potential liability for the city? And if so, what could we expect on that front?
Very good question, Councilmember Arias, through the mayor. My response would be to you, under the timeline, council gave first reading to the ordinance. It's in the admin report. I forget the exact date. And they then gave second reading to the ordinance. And the ordinance became effective, or would have become effective, 30 days after the second reading, and that would have been on November the 20th. The ordinance never went into effect, because on November the 18th, we went into closed session. We came out of closed session, and the council at that time gave me direction to go ahead and stipulate to the temporary restraining order. And I made it very clear when I came out into the closed session action that the impact of that was that the ordinances were in abance. They were not adopted. And that, again, I gave notice to the public that they should not invest in the coops and the purchase of hens. And my recollection is, and I think it's also in the admin report, we did a press release the next day to give notice to the public that they should not do that. So, the direct answer to your question is, I'm not expecting any liability. There is no legal non-conforming use or grandfathering in, because the ordinances never went into effect. And if a majority of you vote to approve the action tonight, the original ordinance is still on the books, which is if you are in an RS zone or an AG zone, you may continue to have those chickens in that fowl.
Thank you so much. I just want to bring up one other thing. I thought that that was important to clarify. But the second thing is, I think in the essence of creating transparency with the public and creating some form of standard for us to kind of think through these ideas as to whether or not we're going to defend an ordinance against litigation. The city in the past has lots of litigation that it's gone through. It's currently undergoing litigation, and I can only assume that it's going to incur some more litigation down the road. And so, I think that I would ask city staff, Jenny, if we could bring back some type of standard or criteria for us to think through these things when they do come up, as to whether or not we're going to pursue them, whether that includes the cost and potential liability, the likelihood of success, and a number of other factors that you might think through. I think it's important that we establish a standard for us as we continue to work through those items. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. I don't see any requests for other speakers. You have a motion on Vice Mayor's motion. Please cast your votes. Oh, I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, I just didn't see that when I called on Councilmember Arias. So, can you go?
Motion is approved with Councilmember Arias Gonzalez and Smith voting no.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
The next item, Mayor, is item 10A under public hearings. This particular item is the one that we received the staff memorandum on. We will conduct the public hearing to receive public comment, but no action will be taken tonight. This is the public hearing to consider a resolution ordering the vacation of portions of several streets in the West Park neighborhood that are now rendered inoperable by the construction of the Centennial Corridor Freeway.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there anyone here to speak on that item? I'm going to wait until Councilmember Parlier returns, and then I will open and close. So, at this time, I will open and close the public hearing item. It will be re-noticed at a future date. Is that correct, Mr. Fidler?
Yes.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmember, that is correct.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Council and Mayor's Statements.
Thank you. Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make another referral to Safe Neighborhoods. I know that the city of Bakersfield operates a limited drone program for special missions. The city of Chula Vista has a very innovative program. They use drones right out of dispatch. They have pilots right in dispatch. They use it as a force multiplier for patrol, 911 first responding. And they've had a lot of success, even stopping crimes in progress with that drone. Would it help Ward 7? Yes. But with the location of the police department being downtown, geographically advantageous for specifically Wards 1 and 2 with some of those problems that they face. And I think it's a great program that we take a look at.
Thank you, Councilmember Parlier. Councilmember Gray.
Yes, thank you. Representing Ward 6, we've had several things that have been coming to my attention in the last week. I've been keeping the city staff pretty busy. And I just want to commend you for your quick response to things that I've sent you. It's been just a pleasure to work with the staff. One was a homeless camp that was on Pacheco and Stein, and one of our local small businesses had been robbed three times in 10 days. And so, he called me, and Mr. Clegg got on it. And that camp had to move by today, actually. They're even borrowing electricity from who knows where. They had lights. And then, the second thing that we're really dealing with in the city is the street racing. And in the Coles parking lot, Gosford, I had several letters from my constituents saying, please do something about this. We can't even sit in our backyards because the rubber's burning. It's loud. They're keeping us up till 1 o'clock in the morning. And so, I sent those emails on to the city. And last Saturday night, they had helicopters. They were sighting people. I got the nicest email today from one of those ladies, say Patty. Councilwoman Gray, thank you for getting this taken care of. And so, I'm not tooting my horn, because I'm not, I didn't do anything. I just brought it to the city's attention. So, I want to thank the city manager and his staff for getting on this. Bakersfield PD Chief Terry, a wonderful job for our city to make our street safer. And so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray, and city manager.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor and council, if I just may. And appreciate the gratitude, and we'll absolutely pass it on to our teams, because our code and rapid response and BPD are moving really, really fast. They're working really hard despite some of the challenges around the pandemic. And so, appreciate that. I would reflect that there are many areas throughout the city that are facing challenges related to homelessness, and we continue to use our rapid response teams to address those impacts and to try and offer services to individuals. And I think that there's probably still a need to even be more proactive on that. And so, appreciate that we're able to move timely. But I think we can, I think the need is still definitely there. And then, on street racing, I did want to reflect that there have been concerns raised in multiple areas. The traffic division and BPD have worked hard to target those key areas. But sometimes, it's addressing that issue on a given week in one location, and then having to do that another week in another location. And so, they keep pushing hard on that. And we're still looking at some of those long-term options, partnership with the Raceway and other things to try and encourage folks to find productive outlets for that post-pandemic. But again, appreciate the thanks, but know that it pops up in many different locations, and we keep just pushing on it.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. Anything further, Councilmember Gray? Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to report to my colleagues and to the community, and give a big shout-out to city staff. I had a chance to visit BLNC today, again, along with residents from the OB-GYN program at Kern Medical. And it was a great visit. But I learned that there were 115 guests this last night at the shelter. So, we're filling up fast. And what's even more important, out of the 14 weeks that the facility has been open, 14 guests have entered permanent housing because of the wraparound services and all of the case management that's happening onsite. So, that's one a week. That's tremendous. And so, just a big kudos to everyone again. I'm really happy to hear that staff is meeting weekly with code enforcement, rapid response, with flood ministries, with BPD, and working on, you know, improving their process, their intake process on a regular basis. You know, I know Jackie Kitchen's somewhere around. She's doing a tremendous job as well. And then, finally, the new kitchen looks wonderful. It is excellent job. So, Nick, great job, everyone who is involved with that. Big kudos. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Arias.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. I'll be quick. First, I just want to talk about a particular project that I've been working on with a number of community leaders and community members. It's regarding the county's sale of the MLK Veterans Center there in MLK Park. It's kind of like a county island that exists in the city, the greater city park there. And there's a lot of community interest amongst those who have been, I've been talking to in the city to look into options to potentially purchase or look into a transfer. And so, I'm going to make a city referral, or a referral to city staff to see if we could take a look into that and see if we can engage the county. I don't know what that looks like, but would love to see if we could start those discussions. And then, the second referral that I would like to make to staff tonight is, I believe this was already a referral that was made and/or it was part of the discussion before my time on the council, when Mercy House made their presentation for the contract at the BLNC. But I would love for city staff to restart the discussions about potentially building out, you know, some clean street teams. I think there's a great model there at the Bakersfield Homeless Center that we could potentially follow. But I would love, whether that's staff there at Mercy House or potentially even residents, I would love for staff to restart those discussions and see how we can push that forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. And seeing no other requests to speak, this meeting stands adjourned at 6:24.
The 3:30 PM meeting of the Bakersfield City Council is now in session.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 3:30 City Council meeting of February 3, 2021. Madam Clerk, please call to roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Parlier.
Here.
Thank you. On March 4, Governor Newsom declared a state of emergency in California due to the threat of COVID-19. The governor also passed several executive orders, including the suspension of some components of the Brown Act related to public meetings like this one. Therefore, seating in the chamber is limited. Next item, please.
Public Statements.
This meeting, of course, has limited public access. Therefore, public comments were encouraged to be made to the city clerk through email or by phone call. If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a public statement card, a speaker's card, and give it to the city clerk. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. If you have written comments that are longer than your statements, please give those to the clerk. She'll give copies to the council. And if you're here to speak on the workshop item, we ask that you speak after the presentation of that item. We're very interested and concerned with your issues. However, due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, the council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Again, please avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting, such as repetitive statements or going over the three-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers?
Mayor Go, we've only received one speaker card. The first speaker this evening is Yolanda Hayman.
Welcome, Ms. Hayman. You might lower the mic just a little.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm here today as an advocate for the people of Bakersfield you represent, the passengers that ride Golden Empire Transit in an effort to voice their concerns. I'm not representing Golden Empire Transit or Teamsters Local 517 Union, of which I am a member of both. Bakersfield is one of the 10th largest cities in California and needs night service until 9 or 10 o'clock. Currently and since March 2020, the buses have been running on a Saturday-Sunday schedule due to the pandemic. Today, grocery stores, the mall, restaurants, medical facilities, and many businesses are open, some as late as 10:00 PM and later. If you are not on a bus between 5:00 and 6:00 PM, you will not get to your destination, making it difficult for many passengers to get home from work, picking up children from daycare, shopping, medical facilities, et cetera, and is extremely difficult for the elderly and disabled passengers in the city. The current Golden Empire Transit schedule leaves passengers stranded often because the service simply isn't out there. Unless you ride public transportation, you have no idea the hardships these schedules cause, safety concerns, and also affecting Bakersfield's economy. People aren't able to go shop. People aren't able to work and spend money because they can't get back home if they don't catch a bus by a particular time. Other cities comparable to Bakersfield have night service, so I want to ask you to discuss this problem with Chair Cindy Para and Vice Chair Carlos Bello, who were appointed by the city council to sit on Golden Empire Transit's Board of Directors. Another concern passengers have is regarding the routes 21 and 22 that run here in the city. They're considered rapid routes that run every 15 minutes. However, the bus stops are a half a mile to two-thirds miles apart, and it makes it very difficult for elderly and disabled passengers to get to these bus stops. So I gave everybody a book, and if you look in the book, all the routes have a Saturday and Sunday schedule, and you can see down at the bottom, for example, the route, any of the routes, the Route 41, if you don't catch it by 5:57, you cannot, you won't be able to catch any other buses.
Thank you very much for your comments, Ms. Hayman. Your time is up, and we appreciate your being here.
Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Under Workshops.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Arias, before we get there.
Sorry about that, Julie. Ms. Hayman, thank you so much for coming out tonight and voicing your concern. I believe that council has made a referral to staff in the past about this particular issue, but if I can make a secondary referral to our city managers so that we can, at the very least, communicate that message to our representatives there on the get bus board.
If I may, through the chair, Mayor and Council, I had a contact with Karen King, CEO of Get last week, and we agreed to schedule Get to come and do a presentation to the city council. It will likely be at one of our two March meetings based on shared schedules, and so we'll facilitate that presentation to come back here for the public, as well as to have some dialogue between Get and city council.
Thank you. Councilmember Arias, is your request to speak button working? I'm not seeing anything.
Yeah, it should be up there.
Okay. Technology Services, I'm not seeing anything.
Here, let me cancel.
So you might want to check mine out, please. Madam Clerk.
Under Workshops, item A, Downtown Master Sewer Study Presentation by MKN and Associates. We've received a staff memorandum regarding this item, transmitting correspondence.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We'll ask Public Works Director Nick Fidler to provide a brief presentation, and then we can have question and answer.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. Nick Fidler, Public Works Director for the city of Bakersfield. Over the past few years, the city has completed a downtown area vision plan in coordination with the High-Speed Rail Station area plan to revitalize downtown and plan for future development. As you're aware, the downtown area has some of the oldest sewer infrastructure in the city. In order to facilitate future development and revitalization of downtown, the city council requested staff conduct a downtown master sewer study to identify available capacity and needed improvements to support the goals of the city council and the vision plans. Staff contracted with MKN and Associates to perform the study. Today, Josh Nord and Rob Leipour with MKN and Associates is here to present their findings.
Well, thank you very much for taking the time to let us give you this overview of the downtown sewer study. We recognize that with the limited time that we have, it'll be a high-level overview, but as Nick knows, we just want to reassure you, we're available right here in town with any questions that may pop up in the future. We'd be happy to address questions today as well as down the road. Oops. There we go. So we're just going to walk you through the approach that we used. There were a couple different facets of the overall study that was prepared, so we'll talk about the field investigations and then the computer modeling itself, and that all led to the sewer study report, which is a rather thick report addressing the findings. So if I can draw your attention to the left column here, the project was broken up into three different parts of the approach. So there were several months of field activities, so it was important that we go out into the study area. I'm going to pull up a map in just a minute showing you the study area, that we go out and assess in the field the conditions that were there. So the city has great records of what's been constructed. As Nick mentioned, some of the facilities go back decades, and so we wanted to take the mapping that the city had and update it to match the real world. So we had a surveyor go out, survey over 500 manholes, and then we also sent out a specialty subconsultant to do flow monitoring, and that was all used to build the computer model. So in the center column there, the sewer system modeling itself, the purpose of that was to not only evaluate how your system's performing currently, but as Nick mentioned, to evaluate how the system would perform under planned development, so the downtown vision plan and the phases associated with that. And then in parallel with building the model, we also had a crew go back out and do some physical inspections of manholes and lift stations because there were, like I mentioned, two facets, not only how is the system performing hydraulically, but physically, what's the condition of the components of the system? And that was all built into the final study, which presented cost opinions and some recommendations on improvements. On this next map here, it's maybe a little bit hard to tell, but that's bounded by 38th Street on the north, roughly the Kern River and Highway 99 on the west, Brundage at the south, and Union Avenue on the east. And if you can see some of those colors in the middle, that's kind of the backbone of the downtown sewer system that was incorporated into the model. And I'm going to have Rob talk a little bit about how we built the model, and then we'll talk more about the capital improvements.
Thank you, Josh. So for the, one of the initial components for developing the hydraulic model, we reviewed the city's GIS information, and one of the components that was lacking is invert information or depths of the manholes from the ground to where the pipe is. So we had a subconsultant go out and do field work, do some survey effort to locate the manholes, measure down to the depth of the manhole, and also get digital photos of what the inside of the manholes look like. That allowed us to have accurate elevations for doing the capacity analysis. So when you're doing a capacity analysis, the size of the pipe and the slope are critical components for completing it. But then with the digital photos that we had them collect, that gave us an initial condition assessment of what the inside of the manhole looked like, what type of material, and what the hydraulics are, you know, what we could expect when we're doing the hydraulic analysis. For the study area, there's approximately 1,300 manholes. For the survey effort, we focused on pipes 10 inches and larger, which came out to be roughly 500 manholes. With that information, we use that to update the city's GIS and having accurate mapping of the collection system within the study area. For developing the flow conditions, we first establish baseline flow estimates, and for this project, we placed six flow meters for four month, or I'm sorry, four-week duration, and that identifies average flow conditions and also peak flow conditions. So when everyone, you know, later in the day, when everyone's, you know, discharging the sewer, like how much does that increase your base flow conditions? And that's what allows you, you know, that's what you typically use for sizing the pipe, for the ultimate peak hour condition. So with these flow meters, we placed them at the major, you know, influence into the study area and then also for the major trunks leaving the study area. Since we're not, you know, we didn't complete the analysis from the study area to the treatment plant, we had established conditions at the study area location. And so you can see on the map that we have, you know, about four flow meters that were placed along, you know, the southern part of the study area to identify, you know, outlet conditions for the downtown area. With respect to the sewer model development, the city has a GIS system of the entire collection system, but one of the things that we had identified is that it didn't have any invert information. So between the field survey effort and review of city as-built plans, we updated the hydraulic model with that invert elevation. How the flow monitoring study information comes into play, you can see on this map here that those are all the parcels within the study area. We were able to acquire water usage from Cal Water, and then we developed a conversion factor from water to wastewater flow, and we calibrated using the flow meter locations. So if that flow meter location, we had 100,000 gallons a day of wastewater, we identified the parcels upstream of that flow meter, estimated, you know, based on water billing, maybe it's 200,000 gallons a day of water usage, and then developed a factor based on the land use classifications of how much of that water actually returns to the collection system as wastewater. And then that information also was used for future flow projections. And so we have, like, within the report, we have a comparison of, here are the estimates for each one of the flow meter locations, and here's what we actually measured. And so we had a calibrated model for doing this effort and helped us to develop sewer generation rates for both existing and future flow conditions. And with the updated hydraulic model, the analysis that we looked at, we looked at existing flow conditions, both average day and peak hour, and identified pipeline deficiencies. After that, we looked at pending city projects and how did that impact, you know, increased flows within the sewer system? And then we went through each phase of the downtown vision plan, and you could see that for that downtown vision plan area, this map shows, you know, the areas within the study area that would be developed as part of that project. And so we incrementally went from looking at existing flow conditions to pending projects, and then through the three phases of the downtown vision plan, and then determined what pipe capacity issues were identified through each one of those phases. And that information we use for developing the recommended in projects, so as, you know, if there's projects, as those phases develop, we know, you know, how much pipe needs to be increased in size to serve both existing and future development. At this point, I'd like to turn it back to Josh.
All right. So as we had mentioned, there was the modeling component, which Rob just talked through, and I know that was fairly brief, but looking really for capacity constraints in the system that exist. that exist right now, and that, those that would occur as growth occurs. And then the other facet was this in-the-field inspection of facilities. So we had mentioned that there were over 1,300 manholes. We narrowed that down to about 500 in the trunk system, but there was not time to be able to go out and inspect 500. So we took the photos that had been captured during the survey, and we did some analysis of similar materials of construction, and we identified 50 manholes that we would go look at in the field. So we sent a crew out, and we really looked at just the physical condition. You can see in those photos toward the right-hand side of the page that you have manholes constructed of concrete. You also have older manholes constructed of brick. And what we were looking for were signs of structural distress, things that would indicate linings that are failing, things where shifting has occurred because a root intrusion or concrete erosion has occurred, things like that that are normal in a sewer. But our goal was to capture the severity of those within the 50, and then make projections of how those 50 would apply to all 500. And so we did some physical testing, like scratch testing and penetration testing, to see how soft the concrete was, and worked all that into a ranking system for assessing that severity. In conjunction with the manholes, there are nine different sewer lift stations within the study area. We looked at four of those. A couple of them had been recently rehabilitated or planned to be in the near future, and so we focused on these four, working with city staff. And again, same type of situation. We wanted to assess the structural integrity of the structures, the condition of the pumps and equipment. Obviously, these are a little different than a manhole. There's a lot more active maintenance from city crews on things like this, but looking for any sort of limitations that might exist currently and identifying those for the purposes of estimating costs. And then it's a little bit hard to see on this map, but if you look in the study, the color coding jumps out a little bit better. This is where we came up with a ranking system to rank the severity of defects within any given number of manholes that we physically looked at, and then we projected that out based on similarity in materials, location, other parameters that would have us estimate what type of defects might need to be addressed. And so one thing we did is we looked at near term. We were asked to look at next five years, what should be implemented sooner than later. So anything with a severe structural defect was identified. And then we were supposed to look at longer term. So that would be places where maybe applying a lining to manholes would just help extend the life of those facilities. They operate in a, in an environment that's pretty aggressive for most materials, and so things do wear out. And so that was part of our task, was to assess how long and what type of improvements we could make in those manholes to extend the service life. And then this final map, and there's a lot of them in the report, this is just the summary table and the map showing some of those pipeline improvements that Rob mentioned. So with each phase of the downtown improvements, different pipelines became overstressed, and so we identified projects that could be constructed to alleviate that overstressing of a given pipeline reach. And so this is a summary cost opinion table that includes pretty much everything, all the way through three phases. But of course, there are also recommendations in the study about the order of approaching that. And we trust public works staff also would have great input in how they approach those overall identified projects. And then just as we close, wanted to point out that the report includes some recommended next steps. These aren't requirements, they're just things that are, things to consider. The study was done during a dry weather period. That's just practically when the flow monitoring was done. Wet weather can impact sewer flows. So one thing that would be a fairly minor undertaking would be to do some wet weather flow monitoring and see if it affects any of the results. Also, now that you have an updated GIS layer, certainly incorporating that back into your existing GIS system, you're a little bit further down the road towards any sort of asset management that staff may want to undertake. And then expanded hydraulic modeling. If you have a model, one of the benefits that it gives you once it's up and functional is, right now, it's focused on 10-inch and larger pipelines. It's focused on the downtown, the three phases of improvement. But certainly, there may be developments that occur in this area that don't fit on one of those corridors. And so with the model now, it'd be fairly simple to update and run an additional scenario, looking at a specific improvement and making sure that you capture all the improvements all the way to the main lines that have been identified in the study. And then the last bullet point is just talking about continuing to look at those manholes in the field. A number of the items included in the opinions were estimates, because we viewed 50. And certainly, as staff has time to look at some more, those can be dialed in and more accurately packaged up for future improvements. And that's really all we had in the presentation. We're happy to answer any questions you might have now and down the road.
Thank you, Mr. Nord, Mr. Leopour. Mr. Fiddler, do you have further comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just in general, wanted to give an update to the council. In regards to the capacity, a lot of the study was involved with future development of the downtown. The good news is that we do have significant capacity to last us for several years to come. We really start to see the challenges in the 20- and 30-year phases of the downtown vision plan and the high-speed rail station, area station plan. So we do have the capacity. The report did provide us some information on some needs that we need to look at in the downtown, some manholes that are maybe distressed. So public work staff will start programming in some capital improvement projects to rehabilitate some of those systems, to make sure that they're also available for when the downtown continues to develop. So overall, the study was very beneficial. It showed us what we had available, and then where our needs are. So I appreciate the council's foresight in requesting this, and we look forward to moving forward with this plan.
Thank you, Mr. Fiddler. Madam Clerk, did we receive any public speaker comments, requests for this item?
No public speaker cards were received on this item.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. It's great news to know that we have capacity and we can continue redevelopment of downtown. You mentioned the wet monitoring, and do we, are any of our storm drains connected to our sewer? I didn't think they were.
Councilmember Smith, no, we do not have sewer mains that are directly connect, or storm drain lines that are directly connected to sewer mains. But you always get water intrusion through either manholes, maybe the water backs up into the street, and it may back up into, and drain into a sewer manhole. So there's little areas of the system that take on storm water regardless. In the past, unfortunately, we've had to utilize the sewer system to drain down some flooding. Those were in isolated cases, and we think we've corrected most of the areas that we've had to do that in the past. A lot of it was on 24th Street to protect those businesses. We would have to pop a manhole every now and then to relieve some of the street. But in general, you're correct. We do not have storm drain systems that actually connect to a sewer.
Great, thank you. The manhole made out of brick shows that, yes, we do need to upgrade.
When I first started working with the city, I did work on the city survey crew, and I was shocked to know how many manholes we have in the downtown area that are brick. And they have held up really well compared to concrete. As Josh has indicated, there is, the sewer system is very corrosive and is very damaging to concrete. Clay is one of the best products for a sewer system, so the clay bricks have held up very well over time.
Huh, okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Freeman?
Thank you. Nick, maybe you can answer this, or our consultants. Was one of the purposes of the study to identify areas of stress where sewer mains may collapse, lift stations may be about to break down? I was just wondering, or kind of hoping that one of the outcomes of the study was to identify areas that are likely to be under stress and, you know, like when they do the, what the thing with your heart, and they tell you which things are clogged and which ones are going to go, and you got to put a stent here. I didn't know if this helped us identify areas that could, you know, that could collapse in the future.
So they, in order to look at if an area could collapse in the future, we'd have to video every line within the system. So what they've done is done a snapshot of 10% of the system and reviewed that. What their study did is analyzed various portions of the system and then made, extrapolated what they found into the remainder of that system. Because typically, when they're built, they're built to the same materials, they have the same amount of flow, and so you would expect to see the same condition along that whole pipeline.
Okay, kind of, so the general condition is, you know, it's an old system or whatever, and most of it's old, and this is the condition, I guess I understand. So this, this did not help us identify areas of stress, and you're saying that's really almost impossible?
So when you, when you talk about stress, there's two different types of stress. When you, there's a stress when you overdevelop an area and it becomes surcharged with sewer, which can have a different type of impact to a sewer system, which is the hydraulic portion. And then you have stress from aging infrastructure. So they did both. They looked at both. They analyzed through a model of the stresses contained to development, what, you know, what is being flushed down that system. So they have that analysis, and what we've determined from that is we do have significant capacity in our lines for future development. Then they also analyzed the condition of a representative amount of the system that we can extrapolate and determine on, okay, this area of this system is showing signs of failure or signs of weakness. That means that we need to go in there and analyze it a little bit further and not only take that one manhole, but the next 10 that is connected to that same system that was built at the same time and is carrying the same amount of flow.
So you're just saying, we learned enough to know we need to look a little further?
In certain areas, yes, yeah. They have made a recommendation of projects that we need to further analyze. So we will take those year by year and on a priority basis with what funding's available through our enterprise fund, and then we'll analyze those segments.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Nick, for this presentation, and thank you to the presenters today. You know, our council goal states that we're aiming to double the population of downtown by 2030, and part of that is making sure that we have the capacity to do so. And so I'm glad that we take, took this step and that we're moving in the right direction here. Just a couple quick questions. You stated, Nick, that we have sufficient capacity for future development. My question is, what does that mean for specific projects, then? So developer comes in and wants to build a new building, a new housing development, what would that mean for them and their need to assess capacity?
So unfortunately, the city doesn't have a crystal ball, or staff doesn't. So every time a new development comes in, we will compare it to whatever the uses that they analyzed in the sewer model. So if it's consistent with what's in the sewer model, we will approve it just as that. If it's something different than what was anticipated in the future vision plan and in the model, we might request that the developer provide a little bit of a sewer study to verify that it's consistent and still meets the demands. Because someone could come in and put a, you know, 20-story hotel next to the high-speed rail station. Well, we didn't, may not have taken into account for a 20-story hotel and the amount of sewer discharge that that would create. So we would, if it was that situation, we'd have them look at it and verify that it still fits within the system. Moving forward, there are, there are some improvements that will be required in years 20 and 30. We will, next year, what we're proposing is looking at creating planned sewer areas to help correct those needs in the future. So a developer that might fall within that area that will require the, those future improvements, we will establish a planned sewer area to help offset those costs as it's developed. That's very similar to what we do for the remainder of the city as development starts to spread. We create these planned sewer areas, and that helps build the infrastructure so one developer, when they come in and they need additional capacity, they're not required to pay the whole, whole cost of those improvements. It's spread out throughout the whole downtown community that are associated with those impacts.
Thank you.
Anything else, Councilmember Gonzalez?
I'm done, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Thank you to all of your presenters. Mr. Clegg, is there anything further in closing?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please. Oh, sorry. Vice Mayor?
Motion to receive and file.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes. Well, do you still remember how to do that now electronically? It's been a while. Thank you. And now, next item, please.
Under closed session, Item 4A, Conference with Legal Counsel, Initiation of Litigation, Two Matters. Item 4B, Conference with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation Regarding Rosedale Rio Bravo Water Storage District, a California Water Storage District versus the City of Bakersfield.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn to closed session.
We're adjourned to closed session.